I don't want to put any pressure on you Jim.
You're great Jim, nobody's watching.
Okay, we'll call this meeting, uh, this publicly carrying order, whatever one please do in the flat.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Hi Chuck Davis.
Here.
Councilman McCulley.
Here.
Senator Oxford.
Here.
Senator Bellbar.
He's not here.
Senator Gary Flute.
Here.
And we have forum will move forward, uh. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, basically this is a public carry on a resolution for a budget amendment. And it's a twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Everybody had a chance to look at that. Hey, do I have a motion to go ahead and accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, due to some technical difficulties, we're gonna have to. I'm gonna ask for a short recess on this public hearing while they get everything, we're having computer issues. And they're about to fix, so do you have a motion for a short recess?
I'll make a motion for a short recess.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution twenty twenty five, actual five. A resolution amending the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five annual budget of the town of Saratoga to increase the revenue and expenditures. Do you have a file that you're starting line on for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five?
Okay, thank you. Would you please, uh, read the amounts we're talking about? Just the totals.
General fund, actual revenues and income. You want me to go there?
Uh, we can hear you okay.
Taxes is two million, two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and twenty five, twenty one. License and permits, one hundred and sixty six thousand, five hundred and sixty eight, nineteen. Intergovernmental revenue, four hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy six, twenty five. Charges for service, seventy five thousand, eight hundred and seventy six, forty nine. Bribes and forfeitures, twenty thousand, sixty five, thirty six. miscellaneous revenues, one hundred and seventy four thousand, eight hundred and twenty seven, fifty one. Contributions and transfers, sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty four, seventy five. Transfers from reserves, fifty five thousand, eight hundred and forty, fourteen. Total actual general fund revenues, three million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirteen and ninety cents. Actual enterprise revenues, uh, impact funds is one million, two hundred and fifty one thousand, five hundred and ninety three, twenty four. Transfers from reserves being three hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and fifty eight, twenty six. Airport fund is four hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred and fifty three, eighteen. The transfers from reserves being fifty five thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine, twenty nine. Water fund is nine hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred and nineteen, seventy six. Sewer fund, five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and nine, seventy three. We then pest, one hundred and thirty nine thousand, six hundred and forty one, seventy seven, with transfers from reserves being fifty five thousand, three hundred and seven, forty four. Specific purpose tax, two million, nine hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven forty six, twenty one, with transfers from reserves being eight hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred and twenty six, fifty eight. Total actual enterprise revenue is six million, two hundred and eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty three, eighty nine.
Okay. Uh. Thank you. Go ahead and read the expenditure, just raise the fold thread on each one.
Spins and dispersion of the general fund. Town hall, four hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred and eighty one, thirty four. Planning, eighty eight thousand, one hundred and forty. Municipal court, thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty two, sixty three. Police department, one million, two hundred and thirty five thousand, two hundred and thirty five, twenty two. Bonter fire department, fifty four thousand, four hundred and forty three, sixteen. Streets department, five hundred and thirty one thousand, nine hundred and five, fifty one. Swimming pool, ninety one thousand, six hundred and forty nine, sixty three. Hot pool, fifty four thousand, six hundred and fourteen, thirty two. Saratoga lake, nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty three, ninety four. Parks, two hundred and forty four thousand, nine hundred and twenty four, thirty. Recreation department, one hundred and forty five thousand, eight hundred and twenty two, twenty two. Community center, two hundred and one, two hundred and forty one thousand, five hundred and four, twenty three, with the total expenditures of the general fund of three million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirteen and ninety cents. Actual expenses and dispersments of surprise fund, um, impact funds, one million, two hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety three, twenty four. Airport fund, four hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred and fifty three, eighteen. Water fund, nine hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred and nineteen, seventy six. Sewer fund, five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and nine, seventy three. Even pest, one hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred and forty one, seventy seven. Specific purpose tax, two million, nine hundred and thirty seven, thousand, two hundred and forty six, twenty one, with total actual enterprise expenditures, meaning, being six million, two hundred and eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty three, eighty nine.
Hey, thank you. Hey, this is open for questions from the public, if there's any questions? Any discussion, any discussion from the council, any comment there? Hey, I'm gonna leave this public hearing open for, oh. Three more minutes, if there's no comments that come forward or questions, then we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh. It sounded uninformed during the. This budget amendment, so why are you doing this? Explain to me since I'm not a good people.
Uh, some of our revenues come in different. So we have to go through it and make sure everything balances out, the revenues will roll right into a, uh, uh, savings account as you would have it reserved. So, and some of them were a little lower, some of them were a little higher. So we have to amend the budget because we passed a budget with what we projected, does this make sense? And they didn't come in right, so we're just amending this budget to say, and per statute, after a lot of discussion today and talking with people, uh, we can roll it into, uh, a reserve account, or we can amend our new budget and put it in there. We chose to roll it into a reserve account.
Thank you.
So, there's no more questions. Do I have a motion to end this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to end the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on, do I have a motion to? Call the council meeting to order?
Make a motion to call the council meeting to order.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, roll calls already done, opening ceremonies, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Did everybody had a chance to look over this? For tonight? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to prove the agenda is read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to last meeting's minutes, uh. Everybody had a chance to read over those. Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve last, last meeting's minutes? From July first?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July first meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the bills, we had deposits in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and fifty seven cents. Count payable in the amount of four hundred and seventy two thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars and ten cents. Excuse me, transmittals in the amount of nine, or thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty five dollars and sixty four cents. And payroll in the amount of forty thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars and sixty eight cents. Any questions? Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay the bills as read?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Uh, I received a letter from Cindy Karn, she was questioning a few things. Uh, about why the swimming pool was closed down for one of, uh, sessions for evening aerobics, uh, the pool had been reserved prior to it being shut down. Uh, everything was followed according to protocol. Uh, the rectoror notified the, uh, instructor that teach the, uh.
Aerobics.
Or, uh, water aerobics, and it was her job to notify her classes that we're not having them, not, that is not up to the council. The instructors were notified, so if a class gets cancelled, I don't believe that's our responsibility. We notified the instructor, so, uh, I hope that answers Cindy's questions, that'll be put in the minute. Uh, she's not here tonight, and, uh, we'll just move on from there. Any other correspondence?
No sir.
Okay, we'll move on to items from the public, the first one we have is a special events permit, a Miss Notwell. Her missus Notwell?
Depends on the day.
About a man.
Well, that depends on the day too. Twenty nine Daniel Steinle Cup. I know I'm only three weeks out, but I had to wait till I had enough brewers to clarify having the event. We, I'm now at nine Wyoming brewers for it. Yeah, so.
Veterans Island?
Veterans Island. But I called her a couple of months ago and made sure it was available and everything, just so that we could contact the brewers, make sure that date worked for them and everything, and so. The second, August second, um, the event is actually only one to five, is what I've asked for the, um, open liquor permit to be. One to five, but we have to get there early and, um, set up, so I don't lock the, um, bridges off until like twelve thirty. And so I've had a few in the past, and Stacy told me in her years past, there's always been someone that's like, we're just walking, and I'm like, yeah, I know, but I went to the town council. It's a special event, we have it privately booked, so unfortunately you don't get to walk around, right now it's thirteen and a half, it's still thirty dollars.
Good.
So, basically from twelve thirty, I mean, I'll be there, I'll have, I'll be setting up and stuff, but I'm not gonna close off the bridge until about twelve thirty, until five.
Are you sure that's enough time? We can close it off at eleven. Easy.
That would be better.
Okay, so we'll go.
I mean, I have my brewers, and they're all supposed to be over the bridge by eleven, and the food vendors are supposed to be over by eleven, so that would work.
That's eleven to five thirty?
Perfect.
Okay, and what date?
It's Saturday, August second.
Second, any discussion? Police chief, any issues?
No, in the eleven years now that I've been down here around it, I haven't had any major issues, I don't know, maybe two fights in the eleven years that occurred there, and that's it.
With the presence of a walkthrough, and then the sheriff, um, usually has a deputy or two walk through, I've noticed in the past five years, this, the sixth, that, um, the rowdiness and the being carried out has dropped.
Yeah, what about unrigged drinkers?
So I, I'll have people at both bridges doing, conducting, um, ID checks.
Yeah.
And green means go, that they're over twenty one, red means no.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the special events permit for the twenty ninth annual brew fest, August second? Uh, Veterans Island will be closed from eleven to five thirty.
I'll make a motion to prove it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Perfect, and then I'll bring the insurance now that it's approved, and then the check for, um, open container. Um, and then also I am here, just real quick, I wanted to thank, um, the council for allowing it, and John to be proactive in it, but it worked really well to close the bridge for the five K. We had two hundred and twelve, which was a jump of sixty people, and next year's the two hundred and fiftieth, so I'm hoping to have two hundred and fifty plus is what I'm gonna shoot for. So that worked really well, having that closed, it, I think it made them feel a lot safer too, coming back, so.
Good.
And then happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks ma'am.
Thanks Amanda.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, next item from the public is the Flat Valley Auto Club. A donation to the Saratoga Fire Department.
Yes, we have a donation to the Saratoga Fire Department, the car club had a very successful car show on July the fifth, and we're very happy with it. But we also have quite a few sponsors from Saratoga that we'd like to mention, because they're the ones that made this donation of one thousand dollars possible. And this is no particular order. Bigfoot Radio ninety nine point three, Napa Auto Parts, Shively Hardware, Engineering Associates, Hotel Wolf, The Outhouse Gift Shop, Saratoga Feeding Grain. RG Reimer, Reimer and Construction, Lazy River Cantina, Flat Valley Community Center, The Grumpy Italian, DC and JK Consulting, Kerry Financial Services, Plath Finders Medical, American Legion Post fifty four, and The Hand and Harvest, without their contributions, this would not be possible. We'd like to say thank you to them, and thank you to the fire department.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, and, uh, I want to reiterate what you said, thanks to all the sponsors, and, uh, it was a pretty good car show. Uh, so, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the Happy Trails Committee.
Since I. Well, actually this mic is pretty easy, even I can talk into it, thanks. So, I'm, I'm sure that most of, at the Fourth of July parade, and we're able to see, um, some of, um, some of the results of our work up to this point, but we wanted to give you an update, a report on, on what is taking place with the Happy Trails, uh, um, project, which is, um, the Teens Wilford Memorial. Um, have to say right off the bat, we're pretty excited about this, and right up that, that corner already looks good. I mean, it already looks really nice, so, um, the bronze, um, the, the contract for the bronze has been signed, so it is currently in place. Our initial deposit, um, for the artist, um, has been sent, so we have, uh, the artist on board. Um, and is currently designing, um, the bronze of teens sitting on, uh, the bench. Um, and once it is ready, then it'll come, and we'll be able to look at, um, you know, what he's got for us, and, and then hopefully get it to Foundry, uh, before too awful long. The wall, um, clearly, uh, folks can see the wall, um, when I first saw it, I thought, oh. Um, but gosh, the wall is pretty, it has nice stone, um, Remer Construction, and, and their crews, uh, uh, put the wall in for us, um, and we have a cover that'll, that'll be on top of the wall, so that the weather won't be able to get down into it, um, and it's, you know, they told me what it was made of, it's some sort of rock, and so he'll have to go away and say, she said there's some sort of rock, but it'll cover the entire wall. Um, and it, it's gonna be gorgeous, it'll just be gorgeous rock. Um, the flowers, um, that were there for the Fourth of July parade, were, uh, on top of the wall, were donated by Rita Sondergaard, who donated them, placed them, and in fact does take care of them, so it's a nice addition to our corner. Um, the plaque, you see on, on the front of the rock that's there now, it's a plastic, um, plaque, and so it was sent as, you know, uh, uh, before the plaque, um, plaque, and, um, so we have a couple of small adjustments to make on the plaque, but it looks great, so now the actual plaque is being, um, done. And, um, it's being designed and, and built now, and it'll be an actual bronze plaque with the raised lettering, um, like you see. You know, at historical markers and things, really cool, that's a nice one, so, um, the flag pole, we, um, did, um, uh, figure out how tall we want the flag pole to accommodate what we want there, so the flag pole has been ordered, and should be in around, we figure week and a half to two weeks. Um, we already have the American flag, and, well, we already have the Wyoming flag, so we have the flags ready. The flag pole will be solar, um, so that will, um, eliminate some of the, uh, well, you know, having lights on the pole and so on and so forth, we wanted the corner to be as low maintenance as possible for everyone. Um, so, um, the flag pole will be solar, and our flags are it. Um, the one last thing that we have, um, is our fundraising project, we do, um, estimate that we will indeed, by the way, as long as we, we are mentioning, let me mention some of our partners. We have numerous, numerous partners, we do have a set committee, but incredible numbers have, um, stepped up to assistance, assist us. Uh, one huge partner, um, town of Saratoga, uh, Remer Construction, uh, Bridge Street Bargains, and, um, uh, multiple individuals who are advising us, you know, um, and without the guidance, it would be definitely more difficult. Um, so we've been very fortunate to have this fantastic monument for, for teens going up in our neighborhood. Now for our fundraising, we estimate that we need fifty thousand dollars, um, more. That is what, um, we feel like is, is left between. That is what um, we feel like is, is left between what we have already raised um, and what we have yet uh, to need before we can completely finish the entire project. Um, and so around August the first is when we plan to really launch a fundraising campaign uh, for us to earn the funds for um, the Teens Wilford Memorial. And up until this point, a lot of it was conversation and we have a, a, other um, others who have donated, but an actual public push, you know, hasn't been necessarily um, well, well known. So around August first, we'll start a public push and we will let folks know because teens meant so much to so many um, that, you know, everyone, anyone who would like to be a part of the Teens Wilford Memorial can indeed do so. Um, so basically that's our report on the memorial. Um, I'd like to say I haven't forgotten anything, but that just wouldn't probably be accurate. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, we um, you know, are moving ahead, just like once we got everything in place, had all, all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, it, it was very little from then uh, where uh, this, the corner really started developing and the concrete, the wall, um, the bench just looks great, just looks swell. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for? Well, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. And if you have, if you have any questions or anyone asks any, anything, why just let us know. Um, any member of the committee will be happy to keep keep you up on it. That corner is just going to be great. It's just, it's going to be good for the whole community, you know? It's a great way to acknowledge teens. It's a great way for our community have that downtown. Thanks.
Thank you.
You too, Judy.
Okay, that's uh, is there any additional? Come on up.
Sorry, uh, I did not plan to get on the agenda. But I do see that you have something from the, about Saratoga Library on the item fourteen and so like. Yeah.
Um. Peace.
Well, here I am, once again, um, I apologize uh, for grain, so if I say anything stupid, it's like that. Um, last time I was here, I think we were anticipating the Carbon County Library's budget to be cut by ten to twenty percent. Um, if we're only, if we could be so lucky, we actually got a fifty-three percent cut. Um, so we're down a hundred and sixty-four thousand and change. Um, and just to put that in perspective, Fremont County, Fremont County is all up in arms about the fact that their library system was cut by twenty-three percent and they have three libraries. That's what twenty-three percent was three hundred thousand for them. That is more than our entire budget for last year. Um, and to put it in further perspective, in twenty twelve and thirteen, the library's budget was over seven hundred thousand dollars. And it's been cut continually. At one point it was about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand and now it's going to be the lowest it's been in well over a decade. We are, I have a letter here from Maria Wetzel, but I'm gonna sit on this and let her um, refine it a little bit and send it back to you guys with some actual numbers. Because I apologize, like I said, I don't have the, the actual numbers right with, in front of me because it's a moving target. Um, yesterday I was at the Carbon County Commissioners Meeting for their, a public hearing on the final, uh, their final budget, testifying on behalf of the library. Um, and last night, the director went to the foundation meeting and was lucky enough to get some more money from the Carbon County Library Foundation. Um, the library foundation um, is unfortunately not able to contribute to operating costs. Um, but they are going to give us an extra grant this year, so that's a little bit, a little bit closer to our goal. Um, we are applying for other grants like the um, Wyoming Community Foundation Grants. Um, but that's the only one that doesn't cover, that, that don't, that covers operating costs. So we have money for things. We have a lot of money for things, actually. What we don't have is money to pay the insurance, to pay our employees, um, to keep the lights on, basically. And we are working extremely diligently to raise funds from any and all sources. Um, we will have our first meeting, our first official meeting tomorrow after learning of our fifty percent cut. We had an extra, extra meeting a couple of weeks ago. They organized a, a float in the parade. Hopefully you guys saw that. Um, I, I got a lot of positive feedback from the community as I was going through this amazing crowd and people were just so supportive. Um, we even got a few donations from that. Um, but not, you know, more than five hundred dollars total. So that's really like throwing the, the deck chairs off the Titanic, but we still are grateful for every single dollar that anybody can give us. Um, we are reducing our staffing costs by redu- reducing hours and I'll get to hours here in a minute. Um, we're also reducing our administrative staff salaries. And we're committing fifty thousand, fifty-three thou- sorry, fifty-seven thousand dollars from our rainy day fund, but we can't, uh, we could deplete it all right, right now this year and then we will have nothing for the, for the next year. Um, like I said, we're working with the foundation. We're, we're going to be talking to businesses for asking them to consider giving extraordinary donations over and above what they already give to the foundation. We're asking citizens to donate and to consider um, the amount of money that they save this year or they will save this year as they pay their property taxes. Um, this is all the result of five legislative um, programs to relieve people from their property tax dues. Um, five hundred thousand dollars of the county's budget was, was lost due to the twenty-five percent automatic uh, reduction in property taxes that every single residential homeowner got, even if it's a, a residential rental. Well, so I will be taking the thousand dollars that I saved and I'll be donating that to the library. But we're not the only um, outside agency that the county is drastically reducing funding for. Um, so you know, people are going to actually understand probably in the next couple of years, you get what you pay for and if you don't pay for much, you don't get much. We're going to be in a bad situation. Um, we're also asking all municipalities, again, to please consider additional extraordinary contributions. We do know that the municipalities lost about eight percent um, from their property tax uh, funding and whereas the counties lost eighteen. So it's a bigger hit for the counties. Um, yeah, so this library that we have in Saratoga is a wonderful library. It's very well supported. We have a really strong community. We have, we got some extra support from the Friends of the Library Group um, over and above the thousand dollars that they initially gave us. There also uh, looks like they're going to agree to pay our postage, which is surprisingly a lot. Um, and that's just for this branch, but um, we would ask that the town consider um, offsetting any of the library's expenses and the biggest ones are the salaries. Um, I know that in the past, there have been some sort of, um, back when the budget was cut back down to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars almost ten years ago. Um, I know that the then director did negotiate some temporary contracts with the towns to keep those libraries open. That was when we had eighteen, sorry, eight libraries and fifteen employees. Now we have seven and fourteen employees and we're probably going to have fewer and fewer for both employees and branches by this time next year. Um, regrettably, there is almost no way that we're going to be able to get through this without closing certain library doors. Um, fortunately for Saratoga, this is probably the last one that's going to happen too, but statutorily, um, the county is only obligated to fund one library at the county seat. So there is no real protection for the Saratoga Library if we continue to bleed at hemorrhage money. And so the only responsible thing for us to do is to consider closing libraries. And that's, that's the last thing we'd want to do, but in your, I think that you're going to see that is coming in other towns relatively soon. Whether we are able to raise that money or not, because we don't think that we're going to be able to raise what it costs to operate any branch, but we're going to try and we're going to try and communicate to the public that it's time to consider whether, you know, you really want to live in a state that doesn't fund public services. Um, and maybe you can call your senators and those legislative representatives, but that's, that's something else. Um, all these things that we're doing put together give us the dubious benefit of being able to enter next year bankrupt. So we will have no money. Or ordinarily, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand that previous year. And so then we just ki- kind of have those operating expenses to get us through, you know, the first several months and, you know, that way we're not, we're basically going to use whatever reserves we have. So.
So the fourteen employees, is that countywide?
That is countywide, yeah. And that includes two in Saratoga. We have a new branch manager that we hired, Kayla Albert, I think is her name. And she's wonderful. She's young, she's energetic, she's really committed to this community and being a librarian. Um, and we have a substitute here.
How many hours a week does she work?
That I couldn't say and I, I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but I will tell you this, we have five days that the library is open right now, every weekday. Um, that's probably going to go down to four. And it might even go down to three. Um, the Rollins branch is going to go down to four, probably. We haven't made any of these decisions because we don't have our meeting till tomorrow, so I am not speaking officially, but um, I think we're going to see Medicine Bowe and Hannah down to one day. Well, Medicine Bowe is already down to one day. Um, Oak Mountain's going to be down to two and um, and Catman and uh, Bags are going to be down to three. Maybe more, because like I said, with those numbers, we get to a bit, zero dollars at the end of the next, at the end of this fiscal year. So, I've asked before and I will continue to ask, uh, I can't give you a dollar amount or a specific item. We're happy to send you the costs to run the branch uh, this year. Saratoga, with all of the trimming and everything that we've done, it's still going to take about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to operate that station. I know that there has been some discussion about the town perhaps buying the building from the county. Um, I don't know anything about that other than uh, I can tell you.
But it's not going to buy it. They're, they're going to date it over to us.
That, yeah, that makes sense. But, but I will tell you this, um, that would save a few thousand dollars for the, for the county. Um, it would not make any difference in our budget whatsoever, because the county covers the utilities that the town doesn't already cover. Um, and so the, it's not considered part of our budget. It's part of the county's budget. Um, and so, you know, the building doesn't, doesn't really change our operating costs that much. So. Um, I think it's great. I think Saratoga should on its library building. Uh, but I, I have nothing else to say on that other than it won't really make a difference.
Any questions? Any additional? You say they cut your budget by fifty-three percent?
Yeah.
How much did that actually affect Saratoga, do you know?
Um, well, under this, under the projections that we have, uh, so last year it was a hundred and eighteen thousand and change. This year with all of the cuts and the reduced hours, it's going to be about a hundred and three thousand for Saratoga. Um, so not a lot, all things considered. Um, and that's partially because Saratoga is a really active community and this, this library has the highest circulation other than Rollins. So, but all the, the way that the system apportioned its budget or administrative costs, for example, like the salaries for the administrative personnel, um, is portioned out with, among the libraries based on the items in their circulation. So um, not hours that they're open, not size of the community, it's just how many books they have. Um, it's just one measure of how big that library is compared to the others. So we've got the next biggest after all.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Thank you. Uh, we did set aside some money in this budget.
You did?
Yes.
It's wonderful, it was.
Uh, probably is not as much as you would like, but we did set aside money.
Okay.
To help you guys out.
May I ask how much?
A thousand.
A thousand dollars.
That's max.
Okay.
Okay, for now, anyway.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to any council comments. Okay, we'll move on to reports from departments. Looks like first up is that resolution we just read. If you would please read it by title again. Again.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, resolution ending twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual budgets from town Saratoga to increase the revenue and expenditures in the general fund and certain line items. The fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, is there any discussion on this matter? Do I have a motion to go ahead and pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash five?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution twenty twenty-five. Done deal. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number eight eight six, mobile vending. Second reading, uh.
Ordinance number eight eight six, an ordinance of the town of Saratoga, Park County, Wyoming, and titles by, titled by section five point four zero, point zero nine zero, section N, mobile vending on private property of the town Saratoga and is regulating mobile vending within the town Saratoga and to provide an effective date.
Okay, any discussion? And this pertains to uh,
The number of suit trucks that can be on private property, increasing it from one to five.
Okay. Is there any questions? What's been brought to my attention that we need to look at something further in this ordinance and that's the price we charge uh, each vendor. And uh, so that's open for discussion. Do we want to go ahead and go back to the drawing board or go ahead and pass this, move forward with this uh, amount of vendors that can be on private property and then address the, what we charge at a later date?
That's how I would want to go out, uh, go ahead and pass this ordinance eight eighty-six and then we'll look at different prices later.
Okay. Any question? Yes.
Um, currently is it only one vendor per property?
Yep.
There is usually three sitting at the dollar store.
Yep.
Okay.
There is.
Uh, I mean, uh, you guys are paying attention. I'm just saying huh?
Yep. So.
Well, that's what you're attempting to do, right?
Yes, it is. We are addressing the matter. Okay. Uh, so, that's a way, do I have a motion to go ahead and pass ordinance number eight eight six, mobile vending on the second reading?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance eight eight six on its second reading.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The third and final reading will be at the August meeting. Okay. All right. Uh, I don't know if it was the last meeting or not. I've talked to Sue Jones a little bit more in depth about the, the library up here. They're willing to sign it over to us. It's a total of the building uh, and altogether, they're one point two acres there. I've discussed it in-house a little bit. I've discussed it with various council members. I think it'd be a pretty good deal. Uh, the actual cost to run it for a year from all their breakdowns last year, from January to January, last year was uh, four thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, along this, we would be gaining property too. The offer's there, the offer's there, that their attorney would drop, drop, do all the paperwork. It wouldn't cost the town anything there. So what's the feelings?
I'd think it'd be a pretty good idea, probably.
So do I. Think it would, it would probably help donations in the valley, knowing that it was going to this library.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would spark, could help the library out some. I think that would spark, could help the library out some, so. Well, if that's the case, uh, yes.
Um, then the library would operation would lease.
We would, we would own the building, just like the county does now. Okay, the library board runs off the county budget, okay? They would still run underneath the county. Okay, all we're going to do is own the building. That means we're going to be responsible for heating, lighting. We take care of all the water and the sewer and the snow removal and the lawn mowing and everything now. So basically, we're picking up a little more cost on the operation of the building. And, you know, and it runs anywhere. You know, in January of twenty twenty-four, the electric bill was one seventy-two, the gas bill was two twenty-five, and the trash bill was thirty-eight dollars.
Any assessment as to what kind of condition the building is in, what the needs are?
The building, no, the building had a new roof put on it four years ago. That's documented. Uh, the building's actually in pretty good shape. If you haven't been in it, I would suggest going in it. But uh, I mean, it's going to be signed over to us with the land. And what's the library? Maybe point two acres, maybe. So we're going to gain, pretty much, we're going to gain an acre of land up there. Which is viable to us if we expand. Uh, because then we own clear to the airport fence. That's how I would plan it. So.
Some of the land, all right, going to the south, some of the land behind the building.
And the building where it's at.
Already owns a piece of land in there, right?
Um, yes.
To the road.
This, no, we do not own to the road, the county owns to the road. The county owns right along the road. Clear down, clear down Elm Street.
Street, both streets and that road up by the dog park.
The land up by the dog park, we own, okay? And we own down into part of the, it was an old gravel pit, I'm sure.
Yes.
Then you come over and you hit the county's property line that runs, that'd be sixth, seventh, eighth, running south down to Sixth. The county owns a strip of land right along Elm Street, all the way down through there, including the library land. Yes.
Just as an aside, because I can't help myself, you might want to consider the front, the additional premises liability that you would take on.
I could.
I'm just making sure that you're aware that that's additional premises liability. Town with that undertaken, especially with that dirt trap that's up there. Um, it's not, it wouldn't be the first library that's owned by the municipality that it's in.
I believe Elm Mountain is owned by them, isn't it?
And Sinclair's was owned by them, and I'm positive about Madison Bow or Hannah. This would be the only one that's one of those buildings that uh, like kind of built way back in the day. Same building that they have an encampment and bags. It's a nice building.
It is a very nice building.
Uh, and the friends of the library do a lot to take care of it too. They did, they did scuttle their plans to give us new carpet in the meeting room though, because of the situation that we're in.
So, we can do this, uh, we can inspect the building ourselves, we can hire somebody to inspect it. Uh, I think it's in pretty good shape. From just doing a visual inside. How do you want to proceed? I would take a motion for me to go ahead and reach out to Sue Jones and saying that we would like to inspect the building and on agreement that we would go ahead and do the land swap. Do I have a motion saying that?
Yes, I'll make the motion to, to do that.
Sue Jones. I have a motion on the table to go ahead and reach out to the commissioners. And upon uh, inspection by a council member, or somebody uh, of the building that we would go ahead and accept this deed transfer. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, I will get a hold of Commissioner Jones to take back the there.
Thank you, please.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on his. Hey, we'll move on to the police department.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, for my report tonight. Last couple of weeks, we've had a hundred and ninety-eight law calls. We did, of course, make it through Saratoga days. There was only actually two really minor incidents. There was one medical event, subject was transported to the hospital. We had one fight just at the end of the night in front of the stage. It was observed and broken up by Lieutenant Morris, and the parties were separated. Um, during the time, actually surprisingly, afforded fireworks complaints didn't really start until the fifth. Those lasted through the tenth, like when we had seven or eight fireworks complaints, which isn't too bad for down here. Normally we have quite a few more. Um, rest was just our normal calls. Had a little bit more lost and found property with everyone being in town. Um, traffic offenses complaints, we were running twenty. And on a side note, it would actually be on the next report, but we did have a deceased subject discovered this morning in the not-so-hot pool. Um, appears to be passive natural causes, but it's still under investigation at this point. He was traveling from North Carolina. All right, my agenda items. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, I'm kind of going to loop all into one. I'm going to start with uh, sixteen, which is for the Chevy Tahoe, this is all for vehicles for the police department. After the last meeting, I went back to the drawing board for getting a new Tahoe for a K-nine unit. So I'm looking at doing now, is I spoke with John Elway Chevy out of Denver about doing trade-in for the current twenty twenty-one Chevy Tahoe we have. Uh, twenty eight, twenty eighteen Chevy Silverado. Um, what they offered me for trade-in on the Tahoe would be thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. This is going to them completely outfitted. The only thing I'd be removing from the vehicle is the radio. And then for the twenty eighteen Chevy Silverado, which has about a hundred and ten thousand miles on it now, they offered thirteen thousand, which is same, leaving that outfitted, just pulling the radio out of the vehicle. So the trade-in value came to forty-six thousand, five hundred, which leaves our actual cost for a new Tahoe is seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. And then since I'd be actually losing two vehicles, I went back to ESU Pursuits who had ordered the twenty twenty-four Ram from fully outfitted. They still have some of those in stock. Um, and so the Ram fully outfitted would come to sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Again, that's a ninety to a hundred and eighty day delivery. And then outfitting.
Do what?
Sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight. And then upfitting for the Tahoe lights, prisoner partition, storage center console is still the same quote as before at thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And that one's actually currently being reworked just a little bit, so it'll actually go down. So at this point, I'm still just going to ask for that same total. So the, under this proposal, what we'd be doing is getting two new vehicles. And our total cost would be a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. So basically for, what's that end up being? About fifteen, sixteen thousand more to get two vehicles instead of just one. And the Tahoe, looks like we'd be able to have it in service probably before we even get the first Dodge that we ordered. Because it's already in stock in Denver. And the outfitter says, take him two weeks to get lights, the longest part of that is getting the cage. But once he gets everything in, two days in the shop, you'll have the Tahoe ready to go.
Questions? So, is this Dodge pickup fully outfitted?
It is. The only thing I have to put into it is a radio. This comes with the graphics, new radar, everything installed.
Okay, there's a radio we take out of the Chevy?
Yeah, one of the radios that we remove will go into this vehicle.
So that won't be any additional cost?
Correct. For both of these vehicles, there should not end up being any additional cost at all, other than what I'm asking for right now.
In a single vehicle, we would ride around ninety-eight percent.
I think my initial quote for the Tahoe and upfitting, well, we can do the math, was this is fifty-eight, six eighty-one, and then I was getting a five thousand dollar credit, so it's fifty-three, six eighty-one plus the thirty-nine, six twenty-two. So ninety, yeah, ninety-five-ish thousand. So now we'd be doing two for fifteen thousand more.
I like that plan a lot better.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion? So be coming out of impact fund, which was earmarked. Forget which one. Feelings? I'm the chair, would take a motion to go ahead and approve the purchase of these two vehicles. One quick question.
Yes.
Uh, and I believe I know the answer to it. On police vehicles, you do not have to go out to bid, correct? Up to eighty-five thousand dollars.
I believe so.
Is what the legislators set aside when they come up with that seventy-five thousand.
Correct. And then what we're doing on this would be, and I don't think that includes the upfitting part. So this is seven thousand for the one vehicle. And fifty-five thousand, nine hundred for the other without upfitting.
Yeah.
Which puts us well below those marks.
We need to double check that bid. Make sure we're in, because we're, we're dealing with.
Right.
Over. If there was something about police cars, and I'm thinking we can go up to eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, I thought there was something, I don't know if Emery recalls.
I know they were having issues with being able to get police cars bought, so they thought there was something on the bucket.
Right, and I can't, but.
That's the biggest.
If we approve this tonight, before we move forward, we need to double check that and make sure we're.
Good. That's the biggest problem I've had, is the only one I've actually found in stock.
Okay.
Everyone else is thinking that they can get one.
Well, uh, we may have to, if we have to do an official bid going, we'll have to send out what's got to be on the car.
Right. I did do that, and I got, did get three other bids, and this one was the lowest by a few thousand dollars.
Okay. Double check that.
Okay.
So the chair will go ahead and entertain a motion to go ahead and purchase these two new vehicles. Ending. We're in the clear on the bid part of it.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and uh, purchase these two vehicles.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, my next item would be office furniture from Uline. It is going to be different than what's on your agenda for a cost. Um, I felt bad, I had Jen change it twice, and then I found another error, so I just figured I'd address it here while I'm standing up here. Since she was messing with everything else for the budget adjustments. So what I'm looking at getting, um, all the desks, chairs, everything we have now are hand-me-downs. The desks have been the same at least the eleven years I've been down here, and I'm sure longer than that. We've got a couple that are just being held together basically with bubble gum and duct tape. Um, with legs falling off. So I'm looking at getting is uh, four new desks for the officers, a new desk for Lieutenant Morris, and a new desk for myself. Um, six new chairs, uh, six new filing cabinets, and it's all matching furniture. I have been working on remodeling the dispatch. Um, I should be painting that tomorrow to where I'd rather just wait and have the new furniture to go in there, rather than moving the old stuff and then eventually getting new furniture. So all the new furniture comes to seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. We did budget for ten thousand dollars for new officer, office furniture in this year's budget. It'd be coming out of my general fund account.
Questions? What was the total again?
That ends up being seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. I did some modifications and cut some other stuff out that I had in there.
Any questions?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and purchase this office furniture.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Yes. Seven thousand, eight hundred and five.
Thank you.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, that's everything I have tonight.
Any questions for the police chief? Okay, we'll move on to the fire department, uh. But he got in touch with me, so we'll move on to the recreation department.
Evening, gentlemen.
Oh, you throw that around, Louis?
Um, so I have a couple of things. Uh, my first item stair stepper or the rec center gym was added to the budget. It is for a toll of four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
You did budget for this?
Correct.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and purchase this stairs? Stairmaster four G step mill for the rec department?
I'd make a motion for it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Um, another one, the next one is another piece of gym equipment for the rec department. It is an all-in-one trainer. Um, whole cost for that is eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. This was budgeted as well. I'm pretty sure it's coming in under what I've been looking for.
Any discussion, excuse me? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and purchase the all-in-one trainer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Um, other than that, we had registration for adult softball, and we have a total of eight teams. So that's double what we had last year. Um, so it's a pretty great turnout. Um, pool's going great.
My understanding it'll play some games in encampment too?
That is correct, yes. I've, and I've talked to council and mayor there, they're letting us use the shed to store the equipment in. Should be pretty.
Good deal.
Good.
Yeah. Good deal. All right, Carter, we'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Carter.
Okay, we'll move on to Department of Public Works.
Councillors? Picking off, um, item twenty-one. Been working on this West Bench project for about a year now, and we finally got bids back for it. They came in right at what we estimated, within a couple of percent. So we did end up with three bids. One, um, from Rocky Mountain Santa Grava, who we worked with before, was the apparent low bidder. There were, um, one, four, and some change. We had another contractor, um, Western Union Disciple that let's say their name wrong. They were one, five, and then American West was about a million dollars over their competitors. So, Craig with EA tabbed everything. So Craig with EA tabbed everything, all the bids came in with all the quantities correct and everything, all the bids checked out. So we would recommend awarding a base bid, and then whatever alternates you guys would like to do Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel. Um, I had a discussion with the Joint Powers Board. We had four alternates. Um, we would like to award at least alternate one, and they also recommended, um, awarding alternate four. All the alternates that we had on there are also options to be done under the clean water project with the sewer lines across the river. And the reason those were added on there is because those alternates were not on the special purpose tax. So we wanted to make sure that we still get those done at some point. Prices were good, so we didn't want to move forward with, um, alternate one. Alternate four is an extension that would run across our property, a half a block of our property. Um, that would, it would benefit the town if we were to sell those lots in the future. If we do move forward with alternate four, I think we should, we need to consider and ensure we pay for it out of our own funding. We have general fund reserves we could do that with, I, because if we sell those lots, that benefit's not gonna go to the sewer fund, it'll go to the general fund. So if we're gonna invest in an extension for our benefit, I'd like to pay for, out of the, uh, the appropriate fund, and I did kind of run that back by Kylie, and she thought that was a probably well warranted idea. So it's already, it's already designed, it's in there. So it's up to you guys, um, there's a plethora of combinations, um, I really don't want to award any more than one alternate, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want to see our sewer balance cash on hand get below that million mark. Keep that as high as possible, so we can do with what, um, we were able to save this year off the sewer fund, and what we foresee coming in the budget next year, we could pay for that one alternate and not digress too badly financially, and then we could do those other alternates when we get to doing the sewer project across in the river.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Is that what you guys want?
And alternate one goes across our property?
Four does.
Four does.
Yeah.
So you want to do alternate one this year?
Al- alternate one and alternate four was what the Joint Powers Board recommended we do. So if we're gonna move forward with, um, four, because it's an extension, I think we, we do that, we just pay for it. Not out of a sewer fund. But the prices were good, I mean, they came in where we thought, and that was, I'm pretty encouraged. Went to seven thousand feet of replacement, which is pretty cool.
Yeah. Well, it needs done.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, it was voted on, and it was part of the special purpose tax project, and we want to do those projects that people voted for, and
Well. Any more discussion, questions? Chair would take a motion to go ahead and, uh, award this bid to, uh, what's the name of it?
Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel.
Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel with alternate one and four, paying for alternate four out of our sewer general fund?
Oh, I heard, out of the town.
Out of the town general fund.
I would make a motion to, uh, award this bid to that gentleman and the alternate up there too.
Hey, we have a motion on the table to go ahead and award Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel with the bid on the West Bank sewer project. Uh, also doing alternates one and four, paying for alternate four out of the general fund. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, moving on, we did get the bathroom for Never Forget Park out to bid. I think coming in late at the season, uh, we received three bids, um, the spreads were pretty significant. You know, we had anywhere from a thousand dollars square foot down to seven fifty. Um, we think we can come in a lot lower, come just table in this and bidding it out later. We also had another bid we weren't able to read because the paperwork was not correct as far as the requirements for the grant. And then I did have a discussion with the design team today, we are gonna simplify a few things, um, that we're reviewing the plans just to bring costs down, pay for. Still look good, it still look really nice, but like there was some tile on the floor that we don't need to, to do that I had catch before. And then a couple of, I would call it decorative items that we can probably eliminate and reduce that. Well, I would not recommend awarding this at this time, I don't think that's a economically feasible deal for us, and we're not in an emergency rush, so suggest we sit and put it out when it gets a little colder in.
So do I have a motion to go ahead and not award the bid, table it for now, uh, with further input from the architect?
Yeah, with the intent to rebid it later this fall.
And rebid it later this fall.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to table it for now and, and rebid it later in the fall.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, um, item twenty-three, this, uh, kind of ties into the Water and Sewer Joint Powers Board, we did have a discussion. Um, as we've gone through the bills, Brendan and Jen have been doing a good job helping me out with that and putting a lot of time in with that. And we're getting the bills to reflect how the ordinances have written specifically to the commercial side. Um, we are unveiling a lack of equity in how those calculations come out. Um, you know, we have where it's based on your water usage, you know, you have someone who's doing concrete or whatever, where the water's not going down into the sewer, but their sewer bill is. They've got a toilet, but their sewer bill is very high because of their water usage. Then you have something like, say, a motel or something where the water usage is lower because they're not watering a lot or whatever, but they are putting a bigger demand on the sewer. So in short, um, the best way to remedy that equity is that equivocal dwelling unit table that we have in the sewer ordinance for towns that are for utilities that, sorry, customers that are not hooked up to the water. We want to just move everybody to the EU table. And that's a, a national system that's been looked at and calculated and investigated, but multiple different agencies, multiple different times, and kind of a normal way of doing things that I think will provide, we're not gonna see that imbalance of people just because they're watering their lawn, paying a big, high sewer bill compared to someone who might actually be putting a bigger demand on the sewer system, even though they're not using as much water. So it's gonna take probably, it's gonna take several months to get that switched over, um. So if you guys don't have an, I'd like to move forward with that, if you guys don't have a problem with it.
Yes.
There's, I don't know of another way that we could do it that would make more sense. Um, we may have to adjust, and I did talk to the board about this, we may have to adjust the base rate a little bit when we're all done because of revenue, we're gonna see a little bit of revenue shortfall when we do adjust those things, because we're getting, you know, some higher bills because of people's water usage. But we would rather have everybody paying equally where they need to be paying equally instead of people paying an exuberant sewer bill because they're watering their lawn or they're using water to make concrete or whatever. So. Um, if you guys don't have a problem with that, I'm, I'll work on amending that ordinance, it's kind of what I referenced last time. And we'll, um, I'm gonna talk to Kylie about getting it adopted, but with like an effective date, January one, twenty twenty-six, I've got a meeting with her tomorrow. So I'll talk to her about that. And then I did also, um.
Do you want that in a formal motion? Or just?
I, I mean, if I'm not, if you guys, I don't think so.
Yeah, I would just say move forward with it, I think the council's all in agreement.
So that's where I'm at, that was kind of the timeout that I talked about at the last meeting that I was waiting to see how unfolded, and then the, um, impact fees language discussion about, um, kind of offering another option if somebody doesn't have the money upfront to do a development, but they still want to proceed with the development. Um, I talked to the board about that, and I'll run that by, by the attorney and get that drafted up and get it to you guys, and we just wanna, um, we don't want to, we want to make sure our impact fees, we are not gonna keep somebody from wanting to subdivide land and provide housing. So we think there, um, might be kind of like a land escrow option or something somebody could do for one of their lots and still continue to develop instead of being hung up by a big, an impact fee that might be a little too much right off the get-go.
I like that idea.
So, as I did talk to the board about that, and they seem applicable to that too. So those are kind of the two updates on those that we're working on, I think though they're well suited to what we're trying to do, and when we get them rolled up and look through, we'll get them back over to you, and we can continue on down the process. Unfortunately, the way the bills are written, the way the ordinance is written right now, the bills are gonna be a little maybe some people who are upset, et cetera, but they're, that is what it is at the moment. So the best thing we can do is fix it. So.
That's what it's, it's just like the planning and zoning, we're trying to fix stuff. Make it right.
Make it fit.
Yes.
So. Uh. Any questions on those?
Keep up the good work, Tim, right?
Yeah.
Uh, twenty-four, so we've, we've got a paper rental on the dockets, um, I did reach out to the, a guy to try and, I'd like to, um, hedge our success with that front, so I did get ahold of this, um, gentleman who's, um, willing to come over, and basically this is six guys, six days, hundred and thirty-five bucks a day guy to get us rocking and rolling. Um, I'm not a paving machine expert. Uh, I think this would go a long ways, um, me and my guys having this guy come over and essentially come beside us while we're getting this thing figured out. And, um, give us a little bit better of an opportunity to get a better product right off the get-go instead of spending a, a bunch of time trying to wing it. It's big.
So do I, uh, do I have a motion to go ahead and go through with this, uh, true execution paving guy? What's his name?
Tyler.
Tyler, to come over and work with our guys on, we're gonna.
It'd be two, two, three-day runs, one week, three days, and three days the next week.
Two, three-day runs, uh, quote is about five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve that?
I'd make a motion to approve the paving training quote through excavation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Yeah.
Um, on this next one on twenty-five, uh, there is on the backside of that, um, and I probably had him stuck together when I gave him to Jen. There is a quote of sixty-three hundred for the loader, and then there is an additional one for thirty-one, one eight, I believe, for the backhoe. Uh, this is kind of the only game in the valley to do this, these guys have always helped us out and um, done a good job for us. We needed, we've needed tires since we got here, I just kind of keep putting it off and we keep airing them up and.
So it's still less than, still not even ten thousand, it's pretty cheap for tire.
Yeah, I really, but I mean, we'd have to haul the tires off a ways away to go somewhere else, so.
No. Questions?
We did put money in the budget to, to get these bought.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay, uh, Big Bell Company no for loader and backhoe tires and approximately sixty-four thousand or ninety-four thousand eighteen dollars?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and purchase these tires.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, item twenty-six, our, uh, project, our River Street project finally start, is coming to a close. The chip seal is done, the only thing left after this pay-up and, uh, quantities changed for the patching is they'll have about eight thousand in retainage. And so once the forty-one day ad is up that we have to do by state statute, we'll have one more check, about eight grand to cut them, and then that project will be will be complete. But we came out pretty good, we ended up, I think with, you know, nine hundred something thousand in grant money for, for this one, and came in with about ten percent of what we figured, made a little more asphalt, we ended up having to cut for leaks and et cetera, but I mean, overall went pretty good.
So.
I mean, I, I, I just do those as a twenty-six, just a consent agenda. We need a certificate of completion, the pay-up, the change, so there's three items all along that twenty-six.
What was, uh, change order number three?
Just for that little bit of patching, we didn't get it done last fall before we
Oh, okay.
We could get a chip ceiling.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel, uh, for change order number three and pay up number nine, certificate of completion?
I'd make the motion to go ahead and pay pay them, these two in, or Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel, change order three and nine, certificate of completion.
What, what'd you say, the amount was, Emery, you thought about?
For, for which one?
For both of them together or?
Oh, there's, I'd have to look it up on here. It's gonna be one seventies, eight, I think, total.
What is it, how?
So the, this pay-up with the change order number three, and it is one sixty-nine, one ninety-seven, sixty-six. And that leaves eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents of retainage. So that'll be, we'll hold that until the forty-one day ad is up.
Okay.
Which, which that basically gives anybody who may have a, hey, say the chip seller didn't get paid or something, they'd come and file a claim in that forty-one day period is what that's for.
Yes. Have a motion been made on the table, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah.
All right, um, we are ticking away over there on Elm Street. Uh, it is good to see the guys, the more they're working together, the better they're getting at things. It's like kind of watching a football team, like, you know, things figured out, so um, as long as we can keep everybody around and keep things going, we'll, we'll get more efficient, people know what's going on, and it's, it's, uh, it's exciting to see, and we've been able to move people around and, um, go to, stay up on our taps, we don't have a bunch of outstanding taps because of that project, we've got Chuck taking over here, Brad's doing a tap over here, so we're gonna get flow going, and we just, we keep growing and, um, keep developing.
I think they're, I think it's going great, yeah.
I like it.
Yeah, I mean, they ain't perfect, like, nothing is, but.
Well, they're gonna meet your deadline you set for them.
Well, or when we get there, we'll, we'll know. But it's, it's been exciting to me, like, I enjoy it more than anything, watching people grow and watch it, like, it's fun to do projects, but to see people develop and stuff, I enjoy that. As a part of this job, that's my favorite part, so.
Me too, because it helps us out in the long run.
Right.
It really does.
Yeah, the basis to any success is the people at the bottom of it, right?
Yep.
So that's kind of a, a big thing we got going on, I mean, if you guys got any questions? I mean, that. Planning Commission, um, I did reach out to Enoch with Y O Signs just to get an updated quote. It's pretty much the same that we had before, we did get a grant from twenty-five K to pay for, it'll be just under half of that. The guys, um, stack it up pretty quick, so, uh, so if we get these ordered, we're probably gonna see them till later this fall. He's got a lot of projects on the docket, but with that grant that we got, I would like to get them ordered and, and start getting them on the docket to be manufactured. Hopefully get them, and get them in before the snow flies.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the signed quote for fifty-four thousand eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents?
I'd make a motion to approve that quote for fifty-four thousand eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? I just want to bring up that twenty-five K comes off the top of that.
Yeah.
So we're in good shape. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, in the packet is ordinance eight eighty-seven, this is the result of the planning commission working on amending, uh, requirements for accessory buildings, and then having a little bit of relief there for older buildings, older primary dwellings. We wanted to try and, out from what we've been seeing off these variance applications, and what we've taken in allegorically through the past, we know there's an opportunity to widen the building envelope for people in town. I mean, and so that's what this is, I think it's, you know, it's an awesome amendment to the zoning ordinance, I think it allows people more latitude, I think it, it takes uses that have been allowed by variance that are essentially still non-conforming, a lot of those will become conforming. Um, and so we drafted this ordinance. I think it would be good for you guys, let's advertise it one more time, have a public hearing at the next meeting. Uh, give one more opportunity, we'll We'll pub- put the final ordinance on the website. Um there'll be ads in the paper for the public hearing. But it's a, it's a. It's a good product. I think it fits us and.
Agree, I think it's been long overdue.
I think it's a good product, too.
The minute we adopt it, there will be a problem.
Not get a variant.
Well, there I don't, I mean, there isn't really a lot else we could do on top of that without.
Human nature always want just a little bit more, you know, like speed limit seventy, you gotta go seventy-two, so.
Yeah, I would uh. Say advertise it one more time, we'll have a publicly carrying on it at our next meeting and.
Okay, it's the fifth, six o'clock, okay. Okay, cool. That's exciting. And then we are looking at uh zoning map update, just to clarify all the changes, like a meeting with Kylie on that, too. Nothing, we're not changing zoning for people, but just to get an updated map, so we have one to post with all the changes that were made historically. And I have nothing else on that front. That's the big ticket item is eighty-eighty-seven.
Yes.
Um Water and Sewer Joint Powers, where we kind of, what we talked about, we talked about earlier. Things.
Hey. Me question for Emery.
Yep, you have.
Well, you do, Emery, greatly appreciated. Hey, we'll move on to the rec uh commission. Uh bub's not here, they did have a meeting, I don't know, could you fill us in a little bit on your meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I introduced uh some potential rate changes for membership. Um to them that won't go into effect until next year, but I wanted to give them enough time to. Kind of look it over and we'll discuss it more going forward. They will also shortly be receiving the same thing for the pool.
Okay. All right. Anything else discussed? Okay. I just want to bring up one thing. Again, I received another letter. Well, it was an email this time, an individual wanting uh records uh from meetings and that. Well, the minutes aren't even posted yet, they're not done. Uh the town has twelve to fourteen days before they have to post minutes. Just want to clear this matter up. And I wrote this individual back explaining this uh. Maybe to make it a little simpler, uh. The secretary with the the rec board is going to send the minutes to Jen and we will be posting them on the website. Just a reminder to anybody, if you come in the office and you want copies of minutes and stuff like that, it does cost. Uh it's uh ten cents a copy plus that person's time. It takes to get them and we'll probably bill it out on a quarter hour, no matter what they do. You know, they have to start digging and pulling up stuff. Uh but I just want to make that clarified, that's. So I answered that email. And then their next meeting is August fourth, twenty twenty-five at six P M here at the town hall. Okay. We'll move on to the Saratoga Airport Advisory Board. Ms Brenda?
You want to approve your.
Uh we'll go ahead and have you do your report and then we'll.
The board approved four from Wyoming log and timber. Um at the meeting, we approved those four for, and then you guys just they will they they will. Um and the engineers talked to the board about C I T plans that's coming here, they talked about future progress. And they set up the C I T meeting with Y dot M F A S. August, so that's three P M for the. Um there was a lot of discussion in that about the terminal building that they want and how what they got to do with that. Um the Monia two um, I believe, that's been installed and um they just need to put the rock on the base. And the turf around it, finish that. The landscaping is pretty hit down, now they're working on the entrance side. One of those discussion about hiring the police department to do um year-round security for the airport. Um the land fees for June were twenty-three hundred dollars, that's a little bit less, but not much. From last year, um and the flight operations were three hundred and ninety-one. And Mary said it seemed way easier for the fourth of July than previous one, so it was really busy.
It looked like it.
Somebody was busy on the fourth of July, you know, it's crazy. And that's about it.
Hey, thank you, Brenda. Any questions for Brenda? Okay, we'll move on to some uh some billing. I met with uh. Two of the airport board members to go over their billing from last time and. What it boils down to is they actually did two additional projects up there. And it was all tacked on to their landscaping and sign, okay? And uh it was quite a substantial bit. I mean, one of them was for thirteen thousand four hundred and six. Four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents, which included a sidewalk and some curb and guttering. Had nothing to do with the landscaping. It's all dealt with. Once we put them up on the sewer system, they had to take care of some drainage problems and everything. So that's where the sidewalk and. Uh the curb and guttering come in. The other one was uh on the inside of the terminal. Or on the inside of the airport and uh they have two sides, the outside and the airport side. And this was another project they took under and it was in the amount of forty-eight hundred dollars and four. Forty-eight hundred and four dollars and they stripped a bunch of uh. Material away from the uh airport building and then they hauled in uh. They put down some fabric, is my understanding, and hauled in some gravel from the local gravel company. So. Basically, you can take, you know, roughly. Eighteen thousand dollars off the landscaping bid that we passed last or that we voted on to approve last time. What I need is a motion to uh. I don't know how to word it. It'd be a motion, we approved to pay some bills last time that were not accurate. So we need to amend that to these new bills. Uh and I'll read through them. How to amend that first, don't I? Do I do away with?
Be brutally honest with you, I suppose not paying attention as much as I should have.
It's not his job, it's what he's trying to say.
Right.
Oh, I know I got it. So do I have a motion? Uh I had Karina hold the checks up. Do I have a motion? Last time we paid. Approximately how much to them?
We did not pay anything.
Well, we didn't pay anything, but we voted to approve.
Yes, I've got it right here if you want the exact amount.
I do.
So those are the. So the ones that you approved that you are no longer going to pay because they fixed them. One was a masonry invoice for three thousand eight hundred and sixty. The landscape invoice was thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one ninety-three. And the steel and timber hybrid entry was eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five.
How much again?
Eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five. And those are the ones we are not paying.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and amend billing from the last meeting that we approved? For thirty-eight thousand. Six hundred dollars. Uh thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-three cents and eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I have a motion to go ahead and amend these to the uh the billing that'll be brought out here? With the invoices reflecting it? I don't know how to make that motion. Anyway, we approved these bills. Do I have a motion not not uh?
Cancel the payment.
To cancel the payment on the.
Yeah.
Make that motion.
I'd make a motion to uh amend the bills that were. That were charged and.
Cancel the payment.
Cancel the payment on those.
Cancel the approval level. Wouldn't be payment, because we didn't pay, but be the cancel, cancel approval.
Resend, resend.
Resend. Do I have a mo- have a motion to go ahead and rescind? Uh. The payments of three thousand eight hundred or thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. And eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'd make a motion to rescind what? The.
Dollar amount?
Then tho- those dollar amounts, yes.
Or payment. Uh do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll move on to payment of the airport bills. The first one is for two thousand four hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents. It's high country construction and it's a Gaby and rip rap and it's what they uh stacked around the fence. Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay this bill?
I'd make the motion to pay that bill.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to go ahead and pay high country two thousand four hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cent. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I have a most uh I need a motion to pay Wyoming log and timber. For. Uh invoice of thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And it's the drainage and the curb and gutter.
I'd make a motion to pay the invoice for thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Hey, I have another invoice from Wyoming log and timber for an amount of four thousand eight hundred and four dollars. And it's work that was done inside the airport fence. Cleanup. Do I have a motion to pay that invoice?
I'd make the motion to pay that invoice.
Hey, I have a motion on the table to pay Wyoming log and timber four thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Uh. For uh cleanup they did on the inside of the airport. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey. Uh. I have another invoice from Wyoming log and timber. For twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and it says steel and timber hybrid entry. Would you explain that? Rena?
So this is part of the thirty-two thousand initial and so.
For this, for the signpost?
Yes, the steel and timber. This is just for the sign, the entryway.
The entry.
Yes, and we paid, so the total is going to be forty-nine thousand one hundred. That is the total amount that we will.
That's a quote, yes.
Yes, and we already paid the nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty-three. And so the remaining amount would be the twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay, okay. Hey, do I have a motion to go ahead and pay for the entryway? Uh post and sign holder uh in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. To Wyoming log and timber.
It's not finished, is it?
Well, it's not up.
Yeah, there's nothing up.
Not up, so. Oh, correct, yeah, it wouldn't be finished. Did he bill for the? Did he bill for the remainder of it?
Yes, that's the remaining part is the twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
Yeah, why would we pay that until it's finished?
Yeah.
That's just the post, that's not the sign that goes.
No, that's the post in the top.
Yes.
But are the posts up and?
No, they're there. He's working on them, but. Well, taken.
Hmm.
It's a point well taken.
Yeah, it is, yeah, good. Good move, Flutie.
So. Want to get.
We don't pay anybody else before they're done.
No, we don't. I can see paying a portion, but not. Didn't realize that this was the remainder.
Thousand, right?
Yeah, we already paid the nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty-three.
We could. Pay another portion of this. But. Hey, do you want to table that one until I can get with Blake?
Yes, I'd make the motion to table it, too.
Okay, we'll make a motion to table invoice for twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The remainder of the entryway signage, hey. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we have Wyoming log and timber. And this is the remainder of the landscaping, on which I believe they are done with. And it's for twenty-seven thousand fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. What's that gonna bring the total up on landscaping?
Forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay. Do you remember what, they're quite a bit, they're over on this boat, correct? Okay. So do I have a motion to go ahead and finish up this landscaping? In the amount of twenty-seven thousand fifty-five dollars?
I'd make the motion to pay this invoice of twenty-seven thousand fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
For landscape?
For landscaping.
Do I have a second to that motion?
This is done, you say?
This will be done. We send any more in on landscaping, we will be, we will pay. This is. It's come about from the meetings I have had. This, this is the remainder. This is what they said it would take to finish.
Later, we need to set up something where. All the board members either sign off on it or vote on it.
Well.
And so they all know what's going on. It seems like half of them only knew what was going on, so. Something needs.
No, I'm not, I do not disagree with that, Jerry whatsoever. In fact, I've even spoke to Emery about it. We're gonna come up with a bid form. Uh for the town.
Well, and something that the airport board or whoever's in charge of this.
Somebody.
Whoever's seen that everything's going on checks on it.
Somebody's gonna have to monitor it. If they go, if they go out to bid, somebody's gonna have to monitor it.
But it should, everybody on the board should vote and know. Any add-ons, anything should have to go through the whole board.
And basically, it did. They approved it at their last meeting to pay all these.
Yeah.
So.
The way I understood it, some of them didn't know about it even.
Well, and that was the way discussion went down and that's the way I'd come up with the other.
Yeah.
People didn't, you know, I'm not for sure what they didn't know about, but that's where the other items come up. That were paid or that were added on to this.
Know about anything that we can't visually see.
Correct, and we didn't know anything about, and they were added on. Correct, and we didn't know anything about it. And they were added on to.
Yeah.
And the contractor's behalf, he didn't know where to put them because he wasn't given any guidance, so.
Hmm.
So anyway.
Much over the estimate, were they? If this does, there's all of this.
Not quite twenty thousand now, is it?
Some last that the building they threw last time and you threw forty four hundred dollars less than. Once we approved the last time, but not the first initial, right, but the difference between last one and last two.
Correct.
Was the, yeah, the thing that's hard is the first initial bid didn't encompass everything that they added on to the landscaping, so it's hard to.
Yeah.
It should have been separated out and, and voted on by the board.
Yes.
You know? Cause we really have no, we only have control over the payment. So we're voting on something. We really don't know what we're voting on. You know?
Our initial bid here.
Yeah.
I remember that first initial bid, Karina, it was very big. It was very big. So the steel and timber hybrid. First initial bid was forty seven thousand two hundred and fifty seven. Then the landscaping bid was only twenty seven thousand three hundred and seventy five.
And we cut him a check for how much?
The first check we cut was the nineteen thousand. Three. So.
Well, they're about twenty thousand dollars over.
Yes.
Yeah.
No matter how you go about it.
This one. First check I cut for the landscaping was nineteen thousand four. Second one. It's a twenty seven thousand fifty five sixteen. Total of the forty six thousand four fifty five, so. First initial bid.
Okay. Do you have a motion or while we're still in discussion, because I got a second on that.
Yeah, you, uh, I think we.
You made the motion. Did you second that?
I did ask.
Oh, okay. I have a motion on the table to go ahead and pay this. Do I have a second to that? This will be their final.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So. I will. Get back with uh Wyoming log and timber. On this final for twenty nine five seventy seven and see where we're at on that.
Well, that's the final deal when he's completed. And we have whoever's in charge saying it's completed.
Yeah.
Man.
Well. Yeah, I, I need to see where he's at on that. Anyway, I will get back with the council members on that. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Any other questions on the airport?
So one thing, um. Monday. Sunday, only seven. The. Fisherman fighting hardware. Be up there.
Okay.
And maybe all.
Okay. But, and they're not gonna have the sign or the entryway up by then.
Got the sign key there, but everything else should be in place. And the um, I have pictures and of all landscaping, the um. On it and everything. Stuff. We did that yesterday. Or Monday. No, we've got the.
So he's, he, he has told you that he's gonna have that up by the week.
Side?
No, the entryway post and uh.
We asked them to, I mean, we want it beef. He defended up.
Okay. He said he would do it, have it done?
I don't know. I've not talked to him.
Okay.
It's not finished, yeah. It's a nine minutes of this. We did it yesterday.
Yeah. May I ask the council this? If he has the sign in. The entryway up with the post on top and everything by Friday before the ceremony or Saturday. And airport's good with it. Can we pay? Can you, will you give me authority to pay this invoice?
Yeah, if he's all finished and somebody says it's all done.
Yeah.
It's finished. Fair enough?
Hmm.
Uh. Like that idea. Cause I want to make sure everybody did their bills paid before we cut him a final check.
Well, it's because of what we can tell the council meeting after that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we can wait until the next council meeting. Okay? All right. Scratch that idea. Okay, we'll move on to South Central Wyoming Medical Service Board. And uh, their next meeting is July twenty first, twenty twenty five at six P M at the encampment library. Okay, is there any new business to be brought before the town? Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'd make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being adjourned.